Like to call a meeting order, local.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Crax.
Here.
Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updergrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updergrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Barrow.
Here. We go rise for the pledge of allegiance, no assault. The pledge of allegiance to the law. For the United States of America. And to the very bottom of the earth's essence. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice of our world.
At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the Middle School East Show Choir, and they will be singing our national anthem.
Oh, say can you see Why the dawn's early light Was so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright lights and bright stars Through the perilous night O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the head of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you so much for that wonderful performance. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Andrew Maori, and he's going to welcome us to Middle School East. The floor is yours, Dr. Maori.
Thank you, Mr. Stout. Thank you to Ms. Kelly Leidensberger and our talented Middle School East Show Choir for kicking things off for us tonight. Good job, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, I'm Andrew Maori, the principal of Middle School East, and it's my honor to represent the school to the board and our community tonight. You may have noticed our lobby wall when you were walking in, which highlights the theme of this year, which is Middle School East Rocks, and it certainly does. It's no understatement. With our talented students who impress us every day in and outside of the classroom, on the athletic fields, in the music halls, art tech ed room. There is great things. There are great things happening all over this place. We have an excellent faculty, staff, that exemplify a student-first attitude. And with our partnerships with our families and local school community groups, Middle School East certainly is a great place to be. And this is a special year at Middle School East, as it was 50 years ago on June 2nd, 1974, when this building was dedicated and opened its doors to Boyertown students later that fall. This coming spring, we plan to highlight the 50 years of excellence at East, and we'll be sharing with you and the community our plans to honor and celebrate our golden anniversary. It's shaping up to be an exciting event, and it's worthy of celebration. And speaking, excuse me, speaking of worthy of celebrating, it's my pleasure to introduce to you two teachers in our district. They are Middle School East Science teacher Brandy Solomon and Gilbertsville Elementary School 3rd grade teacher Christina Roberts. These two, who have worked out those over the years, have embarked on an interesting and valuable experience over the summer through the Inside Berks Business Program. And they're going to share a little bit with you about their experiences and how it helps support the teaching and learning in our district. So turning it over to our teachers.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good evening, I'm Christina Roberts.
Hi, Brandy Solomon.
We had the opportunity to tour businesses in Berks County over the summer. And the Inside Berks Business Program gives Berks County educators first-hand experience in different businesses. A lot of these businesses are also businesses that recruit our students for positions after high school. So on August 6th, 7th, and 8th, we were assigned to different businesses. One day each is the ideal, but some of us had additional businesses while we were there. The goal of the program is to inform Berks County educators of the skills and competencies that students must have to be successful in their future careers.
All right, so as you can see, to apply to this program, teachers fill out their interest. Sorry, I used to project my voice to a large crowd. In this spring, and with that, you select a strand that you would be interested in. So there's telecommunications, business finance, and IT, science, health, and agriculture, as well as small business and entrepreneurship. Following your participation in shadowing in these locations, the teachers create a presentation as well as design lessons that you can incorporate with your students that would support those career readiness and work standards that we use, focusing on career awareness, career acquisition, career retention, as well as advancement and entrepreneurship. The program is a partnership through the building of Berks Business Education Coalition as well as the Berks County Intermediate Unit. There are some additional teachers that had the opportunity to participate in the program. Here is a quote from Mrs. Suzie Hoffman, who is a teacher up at the high school. She teaches science. She says, "Inside Berks Business is an informative program that has allowed you to learn more about our local businesses and what skills they want to see in future employees. This experience has allowed me to take back to the class what I've learned and present it to my students who are our future employees in Berks County. This experience has allowed me to network and meet employees who come in yearly and give presentations to my current students. This program is invaluable in helping me to demonstrate to students that these skills here are working on at school are important to their future careers. I have completed this program for the past six years and never disappointed. I learn new things every year. I can't say any positive things about this program. It is excellent." We're going to take a moment just to share briefly with you our locations that we visited and our own personal experiences. So with mine, I, you would think, being a science teacher, I would have selected science, but I have previously participated in the program and gone the science route. And within science, communication is key. So I decided to venture down a different pathway and explore telecommunications. On day one, I went to Reddit, and I was at the iHeart Media Station, visiting and meeting with their sales team. Additionally, I met with Leah Tyler, who's one of their afternoon personalities, and met with her about her program that she designs as well as voiceover work she does. Then the other half of the day, I went to the Albany Building in Reddit. I went to BCTV, which is a nonprofit that designs programs for the local community. Day two, I kind of stayed in that nonprofit realm and went to the Goggle Works, where I met with all sorts of artists and people that acquire art to come in and do showcases for, as well as their digital design team. And then day three, I was at Mail Sharp, something I had not heard of, but it's located near the Berks County Intermediate Unit headquarters. They are a really interesting story. They grew from five people working in a basement to a company of over 120 that are really focused on getting those mailers out that you're seeing that advertise for restaurants and businesses and something affordable for small businesses to be able to utilize. So with that, I was able to find out from all these locations things they were looking for in their future employees, where they see their business going, challenges that they are meeting or finding, and how they're trying to improve upon those challenges so that their businesses are still thriving into the future.
I chose the science, health, and agriculture pathway. And on my first day, I was at the Berks Counseling Center, where they strive to meet the needs of anyone who walks in their doors. So some of that is focused on adults and some of the challenges they have, and others is the focus is on families or children, students that are in the area. So it's quite amazing. It's quite amazing to see how they work together in order to meet those needs. On the second part of the day, I was at... Thank you. I was at the Reading Science Center, which is also a nonprofit and works to increase the interest of and hands-on opportunities of science for youngsters. On day two, I was with Berks County Department of Agriculture, which was really quite amazing to see the passion of the people who run that organization and also their networking with different ways that agriculture is a area where people can work in. So it's not just farms. And they stress that, that they aren't just farms. But we got to go to a dairy farm that was amazing. They were using AI technology. They had Fitbits in the ears, but Fitbits for their dairy cows that were able to collect data and let farmers know in advance before any problems were really happening with their cows. So it's amazing to think that with a dairy farm, there is so much technology that our students could also be involved with. So there was the dairy farm. We went to a beef farm also to see how they're meeting the needs of their animals. And then we were also at Powerpoint Ag, which was, again, local businesses that are growing out. And it's been incredible to think about the way that they are trying to network and work together to help one another, how they're using branch riding in order to meet some of their needs also, and how they're introducing AI and the use of AI in their businesses. And on day three, I was at the Reading Hospital, which is really a little city. I mean, it's amazing how many people are employed there in meeting the needs of the patients. So that again involved quite a bit of touring with the facility to see how going from cleaning to doctors and nurses and the different opportunities there.
All right, well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to chat with you about our three-day internships. As you can see, it really benefits teachers. It helps get us out of the rooms of our classroom to explore different careers and the needs that are within our local community. Obviously, we bring all this back to our classes, and it just helps enrich the lessons that we are working and sharing with our students. If you know of any businesses that you feel would be ideal for this, please have them reach out to Berks County Intermediate Unit. I know they're always searching for additional hosts for teachers. Thank you.
I truly thank the two of you for participating. I've heard so much about the program over the years, and it's a wonderful opportunity. As we think about exposing our kids for career readiness, but we kind of forget sometimes about the teachers and having them see what's out there and what skills are going to be required for our kids in the future. So thank you so much for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Monday, September 30th, 2024. The topic was personnel. Session lasts approximately 180 minutes. The Board of School Directors also held an executive session on Monday, October 7th, 2024. The topic was personnel. The session lasts approximately 45 minutes. The Board of School Directors held an executive session before this meeting, Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. The board meeting. Topic was personnel and informational. The session lasted approximately 60 minutes. BCI report, Mr. Brophy.
Okay. Some of this might be already known since federal news that's out there. So you probably are aware of it. Just bring everybody up. Just a few different things. You realize that the final Title IX rule is not yet done. That's still out there, so keep aware for that. But we're still unsure as to how it's going to be enforced and what's going to be enforced. There's some cybersecurity pilot programs that the Federal Commission's bringing about. I don't know how that affects us. I think, I don't know if there's some way we can get involved with that. Something I'd read up to you.
Yeah, Mr. Feit, and there's a group that you've probably heard of at the IU, the TAG Group, and they are on top of being a part of those conversations.
So we're going to have to... Let's see. I don't know where we ended up with this, but the school districts receive extra money. Some school districts receive extra money due to high tax burdens. I don't know how that affected us. Probably not. Probably didn't affect us for a month. I would suspect. I've heard it from seeing it. Also, the Education Department of Education's ending. It's discontinued. I also think that's something you should pay into. So we assume that we're paying and then it's continued.
Yeah, they changed the process. You actually have to sign up for accessibility now. So it's a little bit different.
Okay. The individual medical plans and medical medication claims. That's out there. I feel that's a problem. And that's about allow school administrators to work around. Still a bit worried about that. It depends after. So if you know, know that you see how, see where we are with that, that's a factor. That's how we're kind of extending it. One of my personal favorites. Cursive handwriting school. So it appears that removing all of that. I don't remove all of that in all schools. Not just select the ones. It'd be nice to be able to understand if people were writing one of those things that makes things easier to do. That is pretty much. There wasn't much else within it. We move back to us. I think there's still, still the... The program still out there. We need to... I think I'll see you here. I think it's got to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford, BCTC report.
Yes, I have a report. It's September of 2024. Construction students partnered with a restoring hope to rebuild the family's home. I'm assuming that was a pretty low-income family that they restored their home. We also had the Hulka Cultural Students shine at the Ole Fair Floral Competition. I don't know if anybody was there to see that, but she had a very nice display there. It was Kelly Pitikakoni that was there for that. Cosmetology clinic is now open, so anybody who wants to go in there and get a haircut, they can go in there for free and get a haircut. Okay. Now also, the students building the house update. They are building the house, and they're getting closer and closer to finishing it before winter time comes. So it should be pretty much the outside, all the outside work done. Student spotlight is Bella, a dedicated senior at Boyertown High School. And the BCTC excels in leadership and healthcare training, balancing student council coaching and co-op as a personal care assistant at St. Luke's Hospital. We also had a student gain worldwide experience through the co-op program. And that's it. I have a meeting tomorrow night at 4:30 up there already. So I'll have more information at the next meeting. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Shiel up to the speaker, to the microphone. We talked about recently the Boyertown project that is on the horizon. But when Mr. Shiel and I had some conversation, we kind of came up with the idea that we haven't really reviewed the projects that have been completed in a positive light. So looking at what kinds of things we've taken the time over the past year or so to complete. So Mrs. Moyer and her, it bears repeating, this past week had promoted a lot of the pictures that had taken place. So I thought it'd be a good idea for Mr. Shiel to just do a quick overview of the projects that have recently been completed. So, Mr. Shiel, floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Shiel, Director of Facilities and Operations. I want to take a moment. Last week was Custodial Appreciation Day on, I believe, Wednesday. So I would like to send out my personal appreciation for everything they do for our students and district. They work behind the scenes and make sure that our students are learning in a clean and safe environment. So I did want to share that. So we'll go in with the projects. Okay, the first one is Earl Elementary School. At this building, we did the entire roof, which included an older EPDM roof along with a foam roof and a small shimled section. Everything was replaced. The EPDM was replaced with TPO roofing, and that has a 30-year warranty. The foam was re-scarified and re-silicone coated. That is a 15-year warranty, and the shingles have 30-year warranty. So that roof should be good for the foreseeable future. Gilbertsville. Two years ago, we started at Gilbertsville, cutting out the white foam, and then we put a polyurethane coating on the MB style of the roof. This year, we finished up the foam section. We scarified that and re-silicone coated it. But those projects turned out really nicely. And as you can see by the pictures, the buildings really do look nice with the new roofs. We, in the roofing project, we had a soffit that was rotted out at Gilbertsville. We replaced that soffit with bended soffit to prevent any future rotting out. We also in-house did a couple other softings at Covertdale and New Outover, which were smaller than this. This was a very large softing, and with the rod, it was a big project. Middle School East sidewalk. I don't know if you walked in. If you noticed that the curb and the sidewalk now meet, there is not a tripping hazard there anymore. We had concrete come out and jack up the sidewalk that was there. We were able to save the original cement, the original concrete, and make it a safer walkway. At Bash, we had the unfortunate incident. Last one, if you remember, where our wall was damaged. We had that repaired as well as the loading dock that was scaling and starting to deteriorate. So both of those were done and looked really, really good. At Bash, we did the server room mini splits. The original line sets were ran underground, which had rotted, and the hood was obsolete, so we couldn't really fix it. It wasn't worth putting money into it, so we replaced them. And we also did tree removal throughout the district. The one big tree at the high school was several. At Earl, we have some slated for here because the ash boards are definitely taking out a lot of our trees. Those were the bigger projects. If you guys have any questions or concerns. All right, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Stout, if I can just interrupt for one moment, I apologize. Members of the public have reached out. They have asked us to just ask board members to please speak into their microphones. I think some of what has been shared was lost, so I'm just reminding everybody to please speak directly into your microphones for us. Thank you.
The trials of being on the road.
Public comment period number one. No one signed up, so at this time, we'll be looking for the approval of the September 24th, 2024 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Brophy.
No.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Crax.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will move on to the superintendent's itemized agenda. The first item on the itemized agenda is the recommended action of a T-Mobile check acceptance. The Board of School Directors accept a check in the amount of $1,000 from T-Mobile to support maintenance of our athletic fields. Motion to approve? Comments, questions?
Is that only the field at the high school or is that all of the school?
It'll be...
It'll be a field at that particular time that'll be the highest need. There's not a specific what it's going to be for. Just because of the maintenance that's going to take place at the end of the season. Ultimately, we are in for the ability to potentially win more money from T-Mobile. So the Board of School Directors and I'll look to just give a little promotion here. The Homecoming game is on Friday night, and they're going to dedicate the check on Friday night. And I believe, Mrs. Moyer, it's a pink out, correct?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it is a pink out, yes.
It's a pink out. So everyone's welcome to the game, but it's a special game for multiple reasons.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered because I've been getting complaints about the elementary schools.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Crax.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the itemized agenda is the personnel agenda, and that we are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda item as presented. Looking for a motion to approve.
Brophy, say it.
Comments or questions?
Local.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Crax.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This leads us up to public comment period number two. Mrs. Savage.
No comment.
So we can move on to board comment. Ms. Rutherford?
No comment.
I was online looking and there's a PennDOT challenge that is going on, or will be going on. I don't know if it's something Boier Town has ever looked at, but it's Pennsylvania high school students are invited to participate in the eighth annual PennDOT Innovations Challenge, which encourages students in grades nine through 12 to present their solutions to real-world transportation challenges in a statewide competition. There's money that's given out for that, so I would gladly share this with you and maybe we can get our students to do something with that.
Ms. Duroff?
The last meeting, we presented with a large construction program, 12 to 15 million dollars of Boier Town Elementary. Ms. Denneke, right now, we have that project and we have another project that's running, 8 million, plus we have some other ongoing projects. Are you at any point in time going to come forward with the board and give us a rundown on our funds and how this is affecting them and how it's affecting the overall fund allocation?
Yes, in the future, when we bring any actual contracts to the board's attention for approval, we would share what funds are available, what the long-term outlook looks like for the capital projects of the district.
I prefer that sooner or later, sooner than later, if we could, just to get a look at what we've got, what we've got facing next year. But just curious as to what, how we stand and at what burn rate we're going to be going through money and how much money is we going to be burning for. Thank you.
I just want to thank Middle School East for their hospitality. The course was tremendous. Couple of people talked. I was in the first class that started, so I did not realize it's 50 years. So I'm up for retirement, I guess. But thank you again for hospitality. The school looks great. It almost looks like it's brand new. And again, thank you again.
Yeah, I want to thank Dr. Mayory for having us out here. The kids did a great job. And also saying, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with everyone in Florida right now. Going up to North Carolina with the last hurricane and the impending storm coming. So we should be thinking about those people up there.
Okay. There was a local person going to take U-Haul down to North Carolina, I believe. And they were still accepting things up until tomorrow, I believe. I also saw that other per, or no, the bus company of Red Hill. Can't think of the name, Perkeomen. They did a bus, also that was left on, Monday, taking lots of stuff down. But if anybody is going to donate, there's a gentleman here in the place.
Yeah, the company's loyal construction. Basic means, but they can do it right now.
Nobody can hear you, Jeff, you got a third microphone.
No, sorry about that. The company's called Loyal Construction. They granted a U-Haul. They're looking for anything that's non-perishable naturally, like there's medicine, water, canned vegetables, all that, and then medicine. So if you know anything or know if you need help, I had put a message on there that I'd be willing to go pick it up from the people's houses if they had put something together. But they're planning on leaving, I think it's Thursday. They're going to get more tomorrow, but Thursday morning, they're planning on driving straight down to the gentleman that run the company.
One other area, Morning Star Fellowship. Now, they had an 18-wheeler they were filling up. I don't know if it's full yet, but if you have some things you want to donate, you can just drop it here and make sure it hasn't left.
Okay, upcoming meeting dates, on October 22nd, we are back at the Ed Center at 7:00 PM for a Board of School Directors meeting. And the next meeting after that is November 12th. We are taking the show on the road once again for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we will be at Gilbertsville Elementary School on that day.
Motion for adjournment? Getting adjourned.